Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of Troy City Council. My name is William Lutz, President of Council. It is Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, 7:00 PM. We're in council chambers here at City Hall. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance given by council members, Seaver. Please stand.
Dear Lord, as we reflect upon your word, "Conduct your affairs with humility and you will achieve more than the giver of gifts. The more you humble yourself, the greater you are and will find favor." Lord, let us achieve, go about our days today honoring you, humbling ourselves for you. Please keep the citizens of this community in favor, Lord, and the body and your spirit as we look to do your work in your word. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the United Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Marshall. Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Rozell.
Here.
Mr. Schilling.
Present.
Mr. Seaver.
Here.
Mrs. Snee.
Here.
Mr. Widdon.
Here.
Mr. Twist.
Motion to excuse Mr. Twist.
Second.
It has been moved to excuse Mr. Twist by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Twist is excused.
Moved to excuse, moved to excuse Ms. Marshall.
Second. It's been moved to excuse Mrs. Marshall by Mr. Seaver, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mrs. Marshall is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the last meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of Council, August 15th, 2022, public hearings were held on ordinances O-24, I'm sorry, O-42, 2022, and O-44, 2022. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that ordinance number O-392022 be adopted. The zoning of the Sheridan annexation committee, Streets and sidewalks committee recommended that legislation be prepared, authorizing final assessments for Phase 13 of the sidewalk program. Law and ordinance committee reported regarding a liquor license notice from the state. Ordinance number O-392022, changing the zoning of In-Lot 11513, the Sheridan annexation, was given third reading and adopted. Ordinance number O-422022, amending sections of the zoning code related to historic preservation overlay district was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number O-442022, changing the zoning of In-Lot 8386 to a planned development was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number O-452022, levying assessments, Phase 13 sidewalk program was given first reading and adopted. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:37 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel will dispose of the minutes this evening.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to approve the minutes by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We'll move into committee reports. We have a number of reports this evening. We'll begin with the Community and Economic Development Committee with three reports, and Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, first report, on August 22nd, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission that amendments be made to Section 1137 and 1143 of the zoning code regarding the historic preservation overlay district as provided by ordinance number O-422022. It is a recommendation of this committee that council should proceed to enact ordinance number O-422022 as before council and as recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. As noted in the detailed report, the proposed amendments respond to codified ordinance section 1139.06, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Samuel Pierce, Mrs. Lynn Snee, and myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please move on.
Okay, thank you. The second report is, again, we met on August 22nd to review the recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that In-Lot 8386 at 2601 West Main Street be rezoned from M2 to PD1. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and the finding of the staff and recommends that ordinance number O-442022 be adopted to rezone In-Lot 8386 at 2601 West Main Street from M2 Light Industrial District to Plan Development Industrial PD1, and again, respectfully submitted by Mr. Samuel Pierce, Ms. Lynn Snee, and myself, Jeffrey Schilling, as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, please move on.
Okay, the third final report, as this committee met on August 22nd to review the vacation of an easement that is not needed for a public purpose. This easement is associated with a replat for the location of the new fire station 11. The committee recommended that legislation be prepared to vacate the easement on Part Outlot 5 between parcels DOA 251017 and DOA 250517. The committee supports emergency legislation so that the easement can be vacated and the replat filed. Respectfully submitted again by Mr. Pierce and Mrs. Snee and myself, Jeff Schilling, as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Are there any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Community Partnerships Committee and Mr. Rozell.
Thank you, Mr. President. On August 22nd, this committee met to consider a request for the Pink Ribbon Girls that would require an agreement and notwithstanding language associated with the use of public property on August, or October 6th, 2022, a concert downtown and the sale of alcohol within the Dora area. The committee notes that the event will be cost neutral to the city. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to enter into an agreement with the Pink Ribbon Girls related to the event on the public property on October 6th, and that the legislation include the standard notwithstanding language for such events. We need this emergency. This is respectfully submitted by Jeffrey Schilling, Todd Seaver, and myself as chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozell. Are there any comments or questions on this report?
Just a minor correction, that's October 8th. I know the 6th and the 8th is.
Yep.
It does scan out.
My bad. We'll bring the magnifiers next time.
Turn off the lights.
We'll finish, we'll finish our report with our oral report from the Law and Ordinance Committee dealing with liquor permit applications, and Mrs. Snee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the following notices, a new D1 permit for Kroger Limited Partnership, doing business as Kroger #984, 731 West Market Street, and a new D1 permit for La Fiesta Express, doing business as La Fiesta Express, 1133 West Main Street. A D1 permit is for carryout and on-premises consumption of beer until 1:00 AM. According to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control website, for D1 permits for Troy, there's a permit quota of 14. 10 permits have been issued, 4 permits are available, and 8 applications are on file. And the Troy Police Department has not recommended an objection or hearing requests be filed.
Thank you, Mrs. Snee. Are there any comments or questions on the oral report? Seeing none, move on to citizen comments for items on the agenda. We have one resolution and five ordinances for discussion by council this evening. If you wish to address council on any of those items, you're invited to come to the lectern, give your name and address. You have two minutes to address council, and Mr. Kerber will be our timekeeper this evening. Seeing none, we'll move into resolutions. We'll ask Mrs. Knight to read the only resolution on the agenda this evening.
Resolution number R-592022, resolution authorizing tax levies for the City of Troy, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2023, as determined by the Budget Commission and certifying such levies to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. These tax levies are based on the tax budget previously adopted by council and certified to the county, and this is emergency because it must be returned to the county auditor as accepted by October 1st, first reading.
House Counsel, wish to act?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the first ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-422022.
Ordinance number O-422022, an ordinance amending Section 1137 and Section 1143 of the zoning code of the City of Troy, Ohio, related to the historic preservation overlay district. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the third reading.
House Counsel, wish to act?
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mrs. Snee, yes. Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-442022.
Ordinance number O-442022, an ordinance changing the zoning of In-Lot 8386 in the City of Troy, Ohio, from M2 Light Industrial District to a planned development industrial PDI. This has also been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This would be the third reading.
House Counsel, wish to act?
Move to adopt.
Second. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Widdon, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-462022.
Ordinance number O-462022, an ordinance establishing the One Ohio Opioid Settlement Fund and declaring emergency. The establishment of this fund has been required by the Ohio Revise Code. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Schilling, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the next ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-472022.
Ordinance number O-472022, ordinance approving the replat of part of In-Lot 934, all of In-Lot 935, and part of Outlot 5, vacating an easement and part of Outlot 5 and declaring an emergency. This is associated with an easement that needs to be vacated where the new fire station 11 is located. First reading.
House Counsel, wish to act?
Move for suspension.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Widdon. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read the final ordinance of the evening, ordinance O-482022.
Ordinance number O-482022, ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for a Pink Ribbon Girls event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy codified ordinances, and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer, subject to the issuance of proper permits by the State of Ohio in procurement of liquor liability insurance, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Pink Ribbon Girls, Inc. Therefore, this is for an event that will be on Saturday, the 8th of October. This is the first reading.
House Counsel, wish to act?
Move for suspension.
Second. It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It's been moved to adopt by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Are there any final comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee.
Yes.
Mr. Widdon.
Yes.
Mr. Phillips.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Rozell.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling.
Yes.
Mr. Seaver.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Well, you've come to the end of our legislative agenda for this evening. Moving on to communications and announcements, Mrs. Knight, do we have any?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. This time, we're happy to have a presentation by Ms. Jennifer Nicely, and I do not believe Mr. Liebarger is in the audience, but Mr. Liebarger's son is in the audience.
Yes, I am a Mr. Liebarger.
There you go.
Not the Mr. Liebarger that you're expecting. So sorry to disappoint if that's the case.
The presentation is on the potential child advocacy center here in Miami County from Isaiah's Place, so please go ahead. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. So, as you said, I'm Robbie Liebarger, Bob's son. I'm the development coordinator with Isaiah's Place. This is Jen Nicely. She is the program director for the Child Advocacy Center that we're here to talk to you about. So if you don't know Isaiah's Place, we've been around for around 20 years. We're a nonprofit foster care agency. We're located in Troy. We were on, in the Souter Center for a long time. Now we're over on Stan Field. But really, it's been about six years ago that the board was wiped clean. Mr. Mike Cargill was instilled as the president there, and Bob took over as our executive director. Since then, we've been working really hard to kind of make sure that we're providing the best care for the children and the families that we serve, and I think that we've done a good job in accomplishing that focus of our mission, also through our behavioral health services to provide that additional care. Now that we've had time to get the right team in place and really improve and build up the foundation of our foster care program, our goal is to extend our services beyond that to our community. So we serve broadly now, but we also want to make sure that we provide services that are open not only to our foster care network, but to everybody in our community. And so one of the ways we'd like to do that is with the Child Advocacy Center, among other things, but that's what we're here to talk about tonight. So we are committed to making this happen. We are providing the behind-the-scenes support, kind of the back office, so that Jen and her multidisciplinary team are able to serve the children and families affected by abuse directly, and she's going to talk to you more about how we can do that with the Child Advocacy Center.
Thank you. So hopefully you all got a copy of the presentation, included a video last week. If not, I'm going to kind of get, give you a quick synopsis of what a Child Advocacy Center is. What we are passing around is kind of a one-page white paper that gives an overview of it and explains in a little bit more detail. As well, there's a copy of our budget for you to be able to, kind of animated sheet that you have is, gives some examples of communities where there's not a Child Advocacy Center, and what a child and a family might go through when they don't have a center when there's allegations of abuse. It kind of shows the chaoticness and some of the response on the back page. It shows what happens when there is a center. So, in a nutshell, a Child Advocacy Center is a coordinated response of the mandated investigators that handle child abuse investigations. So those folks are Children's Services, law enforcement, prosecutor's office, victim witness, and then, of course, our mental health and our medical professionals. What the Child Advocacy Center provides, not only is coordinating all of those people that respond, but giving them a location to respond in a coordinated manner. So as opposed to having the child and the family bounce from service provider to service provider all over the county, we provide one central location for those service providers to descend upon. We would provide one forensic interview by a trained forensic interview specialist, and instead of the child being talked to by multiple different people, we do it one time. So we're reducing the amount of times they're having to talk to somebody, we're reducing the amount of people, and then also increasing the quality of that interview to be able to utilize for other purposes down the road. A Child Advocacy Center itself can look like a lot of things. Basically, like I said, it's a hub that then accommodates those investigators to come for the interview. When they come, then we coordinate all the follow-up services. So after the forensic interview is complete, we make sure to connect them to the appropriate medical treatment if they have not received it already. We make sure to connect them immediately to Mental Health Services if they're not already connected, and we do trauma screenings to assess for trauma while they're there with us. So it's really a wraparound approach to investigating child abuse. We give them a neutral environment. So right now in Miami County, kids are being interviewed in police stations, which is not the most kid-friendly environment. Adult suspect interrogation rooms is where we send ages 3 on up to be interviewed. Sometimes we're doing it in a principal's office, sometimes we're doing it in other locations that are not neutral, they're not child-friendly, they're not trauma-sensitive, and they don't provide what the kid needs to be able to feel safe to be able to have that type of conversation. Kind of an additional service that a Child Advocacy Center provides that isn't always thought of initially upfront, but it really provides kind of a leader in the community as far as how to respond to these cases, to these children, to their families, and how we want to respond to this as a community as a whole. Is it something that we can provide additional education, awareness, training? One of our detectives with the Sheriff's Department already brought up, hey, can we get some training for our SROs? Can we get some more information so they know a little bit better about how to respond once this model is up and running, so that they know what to do? They know how to handle it if they see it or hear about it in the school system. Kind of how we ended up here, and a lot of people are probably like, why this, or why now, or where this come from, this model's been in America since the late 80s, early 90s. It's a model that's pretty well established. It is nationwide as well as in multiple other countries. It's really the highest standard when we look at how to respond to these cases. This is the gold standard for what communities do. So research and evidence supports this is the best way to respond. This is the best, gives the child the best chance at healing, gives the investigators the best chance at getting what they need for their case. So long story short, I've been in the field of child welfare, if you will, for about 18 years. The last almost nine years, I was down at Care House, which is the Child Advocacy Center in Montgomery County. In the time that I was there, I was the lead forensic interviewer, and I, I'm a lifelong resident of Troy. I would drive down 75, go to Care House. I would have Troy detectives tip, every jurisdiction in this county drive down 75 to bring their cases to Care House for me to interview. And the conversations started happening several years ago, why don't we have this here? Why can't we get this here? How do we get this here? How do we bring these services to Troy, to Miami County? I left Care House in fall of last year, started working at Isaiah's Place, and had the conversation that, hey, I'm here, these are services that this community has requested, that people need. Is this something that, that you want to support? And they, they did. They were very supportive. So since May, we've been meeting as a multidisciplinary team. So that is every law enforcement jurisdiction in Miami County, our prosecutor's office, our victim witness division. We have the child abuse pediatrician from Dayton Children's Hospital. We have members from our mental health team, and have been meeting regularly to try to form the center, to try to gather support, to try to start building the protocol, and kind of the response, and what it's going to look like. And that's part of why we're here, is, is talking about support. Child Advocacy Centers are typically a hodgepodge of funds. They are some grant funds, there are some state and local funds available to us once we open and are running, as well as all the members of the multidisciplinary team. So all the different agencies that participate and that receive services are typically those who fund it. I'm going to turn it back over to Robbie for a quick second.
And so that's kind of why here, we're here to ask is for the need. So this is a community service, and we believe it's a needed one in the City of Troy and in Miami County. One in seven children are affected by abuse or neglect, so this is an issue that affects everybody, maybe not within your immediate or extended family, but somebody that you know, several people that you know, could probably benefit from a service like this. So being that it's a community service, we believe that the collaboration in our community in our community is key, both in the sense of our multidisciplinary team and having all of these community partners onboard and participating in the service, but also financially. This isn't a service that generates revenue for Isaiah's Place to support itself, so it's something like Jen said, that we need to seek grant funding for, which we're doing both with local foundations and then eventually with state and federal, once we're up and running, as well as reaching out to local businesses and just private donors. And so we're here to ask that the City of Troy would contribute an amount of $5,000 annually to support the Child Advocacy Center. So I want to thank you all for your time and for your service to the community as council members. We'd like to open up if there are any questions.
Do council members have any questions? Mr. Schilling, please go ahead.
Just for educational. How many suspected child abuse cases are discovered each year in Miami County?
That's a good question. So the average number that, so the average number of cases that would come through the center is about 100. And that doesn't include all the cases that go to Children's Services. Especially the cases that would come through the Advocacy Center would be those that would primarily be in need of a forensic interview. So sexual abuse cases, severe physical abuse cases, minor victims of human trafficking, witnesses to severe DV or homicide. Those are typically the cases that would filter through a Child Advocacy Center.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
If I may dovetail on that answer.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a Board Member of CASA, Court Department of Special Advocates, we're dealing at the moment with over 200 cases. That is just this year of children of abuse, neglect, alcohol, drugs, physical abuse, sexual abuse, other things like that, and that CPS touches, and then they come to us, and we're the advocate for that child. So there is a huge need for this type of thing.
Sure.
My police agency, where I retired from in 2004, we've been dealing with this type of model since the 90s, I believe it was. And it's, I get goosebumps thinking about it. A pilot impact with the kids is so positive and that sort of thing. So kudos.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Do any other council members have any questions?
Hi, do is the interview site at Isaiah's Place there?
Yes, so they've offered to let us renovate. There's a section of offices that's kind of separate from the rest of the staff and the rest of the building. That we would get, when we get the funds, we'll renovate into an interview room and then have a separate observation room. It's in a team, so law enforcement, Children's Services, the advocate, they would all come and watch in a separate room while the interview's taking place. Yep.
Fortunately with that, the interview room is on the front side of the building, and the room with the multidisciplinary team is on the back, so we can have law enforcement come around, so it's not, I don't know, being seen by the children and families, disrupting that process.
Any other questions?
Wait a minute.
Go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
Any discussion with the hospital in having the interview process take place on their, on their side? Either one of the hospitals that we have here?
Yeah, so we've not had that conversation. That is not an ideal location either. So in Montgomery County, their center is under Dayton Children's nonprofit umbrella. So even though we were part of them, we were down the street and had a separate facility. And so even cases that would go through there, they would not interview them there. They would, they would save that for the forensic interview piece. We also don't have the personnel locally to do any of those child abuse exams. So there are two child abuse pediatricians at Dayton Children's Hospital, and they're the only two pediatricians in our 22-county area that are qualified to do the exams that they would need. And so they've been participating in our discussions, and we're going to build a linkage agreement. That way, we can coordinate and get those exams scheduled. Yeah.
Mr. Seaver?
Obviously, it's a great idea. I'm not meaningless to be critical. I'm just meaningless. You're asking us for money, and so I think that's a legitimate question to ask. I'm looking at your first-year budget, and maybe if you can clarify this a little bit. It looks like your budget is $160,000 is what you're expecting. You have $28,000 coming in. Most of that appears to be sort of an in-kind. It's not reducing your budget.
Right.
It's basically more, basically, we should have $180,000 budget. 20 of it's going to be covered by Isaiah's Place, because they're giving us space, and they're giving us time, and they're paying our insurance. So what is the plan to garner the $160,000 dollars on both a one-time and on a continual basis?
Yeah, so we've met with the commissioners. We've been meeting with them as well since May. I've requested ARPA funding for the first year and the startup costs. And part of their recommendation was garnering additional city and village support from those that utilize the services. So that's where the conversation started, as far as that. We've applied for a grant through the Troy Foundation for some of our recording equipment, to get that purchased and installed. And then we also have, there's a significant amount that's planned to be budgeted from JFS. That's typically the largest supporter of Child Advocacy Centers is either through JFS, CPS, and then the local jurisdictions that are involved. Once we are functioning and established, we're able to apply for VOCA funding through the State of Ohio, as well as some additional federal grants, so it will open up some other opportunities for any other additional pieces that aren't covered.
Not, no revenue generation?
No, all the services are free, and they're free for any Miami County resident. There's not a cap. There's not a limit. There's not, yeah.
How's Montgomery County fund theirs? Is it through a court cost?
The same way. So the largest chunk of their funds comes from their local health and human services levy. The next largest is through VOCA, which is the Victims of Child Abuse Act. And then the remaining pieces are from like private donations, fundraisers, other local grants and foundations, and that sort of thing. So again, it's, it's really, every center is kind of like that. There's an Ohio network of Child Advocacy Centers that has done a breakdown. If that's something that you want, I can send. And it has the average center in Ohio where their funds come from. And it's usually five to 10 different sources.
I don't know if you're around, they tried a visitation center about 10 years ago in Troy. It funded about three years through revenue generation, which would, which kind of dovetails. I don't know if Irma's House falls into the care center a little bit from a revenue stream, but anyways, keep up the good work. It's, it's a needed service. There's no doubt about that. It's, it's hard to get it paid for. That's always the problem.
Mr. Schilling?
I have a question, Mr. Tinnert. What, how does, the City of Troy, and I, I know we've done the budget, but it's been a while, so what, and they're asking us for money. So what do we spend now on, I know we do a lot of things through the county. We help, our money essentially goes to the county to provide health services and that type of thing. Would this be covered under that part of the budget? Or if, you know, contributions to this type of thing, would that be covered under the budget? Or how would that, how would we handle that?
No, so Mayor and I talked about it, and so we will, we will fund the $5,000 for 2023, come out of the general fund, our general government accounts.
Okay.
I know they're talking annually. We've talked to the other jurisdictions, the Sheriff's Office, the County Commission, and the other cities and villages that have police departments, with the understanding that once we get into 2023, and it's stood up, and it's, and it's starting to operate, then, you know, we'll look at all the resources, look at all the revenues, whatever the gap is, and then we'll reconvene. So it won't necessarily be a $5,000 annual automatic, because it's so brand-new. But we've definitely committed, the mayor approved right an allocation out of our general fund, which we can support.
We, we spend so much money every year on healthcare or mental health. Yeah, I'm thinking.
We really don't, those are.
Right, I mean, because of the Miami County Health Department, right?
Miami County Health, which is, which is nursing and environmental health, et cetera. That's not the same as, as here.
Okay, so we don't spend any, we don't spend any money on mental health care?
That's a different department. That's a different agency. That's a different contract altogether. So this $5,000 would not come out of that contract. It would be in addition to.
Right, I understand, but we don't spend any money then on mental health care for Troy residents directly?
I'd have to look at the overall mission of the health district. There may be aspects of that, but certainly not any kind of direct allocation.
Okay, thank you so much.
Are there any other comments or questions for our presenters this evening? Mayor?
Patrick has already addressed this, but certainly appreciated all the information and the video. Happy to be able to tell you that, yes, for this next year, there is a $500,000 allocation. Wouldn't that be funny? That's been a long time. $5,000 allocation for this next year, with continued discussions and working with partners on that. Thank you very much, Polly, for making sure.
Yeah, sure. Thanks for having us.
Thank you for your presentation. Have a pleasant evening.
We're going to have to get Kunkelman, Kunkelman back there to get the AED for Patrick.
I'm happy to say I do not have that kind of authority without.
We know.
Moving on to comments of officials. Mayor?
Nothing other than what I just said to Jen.
Director of Public Service and Safety, Mr. Tinnert?
Well, we are less than two months away from the big event, that being Trick or Treat. What'd you think?
Ozzy and Leaf Collection.
Oh. No.
For Snowfall.
We haven't figured that part out yet. Trick or Treat, though, I do want to remind folks, because it is a slightly different schedule moving forward, based on Miami County Council, and that is, it will be the Thursday before actual Halloween Day. That Thursday will be October 27, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. Any weather. All right. What did I say?
You said it's the Thursday before. It's the last.
No, it's the last Thursday, yeah, on or before, right.
Thank you, Mr. Tinnert. Director of Law, Mr. Curber.
I have nothing to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curber. Do any council members have any comments they'd like to make this evening? Mr. Witten?
Going over the packet this weekend and the items of interest, I noticed something that was quite interesting to me. I wanted to give a congratulations to Mr. Hastings, our Director of the Cemetery Department, who will be announcing his retirement. I thought it was interesting that he joined the department on my first birthday, so he has been around a very long time. So congratulations to him.
Young man, young man.
Any other council comments this evening? We, any staff members have any comments this evening? Seeing none, we open up to audience comments. If anyone wishes to address City Council on any topic, please come to the lectern, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
Hi, my name's Polly Hemrick. I live at 4375 Horshubin Road. I'm a volunteer with Move to Men, an affiliate of the National Nonpartisan Nonprofit Coalition known as Move to Men. We are promoting a 28th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution that makes two things clear. One, only natural persons, not corporate entities chartered by the state, have constitutional rights. And two, money spent on politics is not a protected speech and shall be regulated. On Saturday, September 17, our nation will observe the 235th anniversary of the signing of the U.S. Constitution. As we mark this occasion, we, the people of Troy, and our elected representatives on council, need to remember a few, few facts about the Constitution. The word "corporation" does not appear anywhere in the Constitution. The Article 5 of the Constitution provides for its amendment. On December 15, 1791, the Bill of Rights was ratified. These first 10 amendments were added to guarantee the civil rights of and liberties to the people, and I stress the word "people." Since then, 17 more amendments have been added among them. The 13th Amendment ended slavery. The 14th Amendment guaranteed due process and equal protection under the law. The 15th Amendment assured the rights to vote regardless of race or color, skin color. The 19th guaranteed the women the right to vote. The 26th Amendment guaranteed 18-year-olds the right to vote. Since about 1819, through a series of decisions, though not acts of Congress, the U.S. Supreme Court had granted constitutional rights, including free speech rights, to corporate entities. One of the most famous rulings is Citizens United Decisions, which opened up the floodgates of big money into politics. As the consequences, large corporate entities and the ultra-wealthy have more power over the public policy than we, the voters. The hijacking of the power affects virtually every aspect of our lives, from wages to cost of health care, to destructive weather events like the terrible flood in Kentucky that resulted from climate change. Large corporations and big-money interests should have this power, shouldn't have this power. It's time to amend the Constitution again and make clear that only natural persons have the constitutional rights. That money is not speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chaplin. Appreciate your comments this evening. Anyone else wish to address council this evening? Please come forward, give your name and address, and take as much time as you wish to consume.
My name's Paul Shapton. I live at 847 Maple Crest Drive, Troy.